You know the things with bundling and all of the things that are happening with votes by mail, where thousands of votes are gathered, and I'm not going to say which party does it, but thousands of votes are gathered and they come in and they're dumped in a location, and then all of a sudden you lose elections if you think you're going to win.
I inherited a campaign that was, the day I was hired, was, I believe, President Trump's low point in the 2020 daily average polling against President Biden. It was a campaign at a low point in the polls. It was structurally and fiscally deficient. You know, I, you know, there was a great deal wrong with the campaign in both of those, in both of those areas. So most of my day spent fixing what, and I think I took over with 115 days left in the campaign, most of my time spent fixing the things that could be fixed with 115 days left in the campaign. Meeting that was had, in particular, I invited Kevin McCarthy to join the meeting, he being of like mind on the issue with me, in which we made our case for, for why we believed mail-in balloting, mail-in voting not to be a bad thing for his campaign. But, you know, the president's mind was, was made up and you understand, you know, how many times to, you know, go to the well on a particular topic.
Yeah, I understand. Tell me a little bit more about the argument that you and Mr. McCarthy made to the president in that meeting as to why it wasn't a bad thing, that mail-in voting was available?
Largely two pillars to that argument, both of which I've previously mentioned. One, you know, leaving a good deal to chance, pushing or urging your voters to vote only on election day leaves a lot to chance. That's, that's A. And B, also previously mentioned, the fact that the Trump campaign, Republican National Committee, Republican Party had an advantage of grassroots workers and volunteers on the ground that would allow, you know, an advantage to enhance return rates of ballots that were mailed. Those were the two pillars of the argument.
I see. And what, if anything, do you recall Representative McCarthy saying during that meeting?
We were, we were echoing the same argument. I mean, his, his words echoed, echoed mine and vice versa on those, on those two topics.
The only way we're going to lose this election is if the election is rigged. Remember that. It's the only way we're going to lose this election.
This is going to be a fraud like you've never seen. Did you see what's going on? Take a look at West Virginia, mailmen selling the ballots. They're being sold. They're being dumped in rivers. This is a horrible thing for our country. This is not, this is not going to end well.
Do you remember where you were on the night of the election, November the 3rd?
I was at the White House.
You know, where specifically over the course of that night you spent your time within the White House?
There was an event that was organized in the residence. So I moved between the residence, a room sort of off the residence where some family members were.
I take it the president was upstairs in the residence?
He was upstairs. I was, we were kind of on the first floor, so not upstairs. We were with, mostly with Ivanka and her brothers and a couple other people who'd be coming in and out.
Were you part of any discussions with the people I mentioned, Mr. Stepien, Mr. Meadows, or anyone else, about whether the president should make any sort of speech on election night?
I, I, I mean, I spoke to the president. They may have been present, but president, spoke to the president several times that night.
Can you just describe the atmosphere? What were people expecting that night when you got to the White House?
I think that there was, typically for people who show up there on election night, it's going to be a self-select, more positive environment. I think people were a little bit nervous, not knowing what was going to happen with the red wave or the red mirage as the debate was being carried out.
The Fox News Decision Desk is calling Arizona for Joe Biden. That is a big get for the Biden campaign.
Arizona's called. Do you remember that?
I do.
What do you remember happening where you were when Arizona was called?
Um, I, there was surprise at the call.
Who was surprised?
Most, most everyone in the room.
Were you being one of them?
Yes.
Did that shift the atmosphere or the attitude in the White House?
Completely.
How so? Can you describe that?
Because Fox News was the first one to go out and say that.
So was it anger kind of directed towards Fox News for making a call, more so than disappointment that maybe the campaign lost Arizona?
All the above.
So both, anger and disappointment?
Both disappointment with Fox and concerned that maybe our data or our numbers weren't accurate.
Mr. Starwalt, you were at the Decision Desk at Fox News on election night, and you called Arizona early for President Biden, which was controversial. How did you make that call? And where did you think the race stood in the early hours of the next day?
Well, it was really controversial to our competitors, who we beat so badly by making the correct call first. Our Decision Desk was the best in the business, and I was very proud to be a part of it. Because we had a, we had partnered with the Associated Press and the National Opinion Research Center at the University of Chicago, thanks to my colleague and friend, Arnon Mishkin, had built a wonderful device for forecasting the outcomes of elections. So we had a different set of data than our competitors did. We had more research, and we had a better system, and we had a great team. So what you're waiting to see is, do the actual votes match up with the expectations in the poll? The real votes are testing the quality of your poll in targeted precincts and in targeted places. And let me tell you, our poll in Arizona was beautiful, and it was doing just what we wanted it to do, and it was cooking up just right. And at some point, and I forget exactly who, but at some point, it became clear that Arizona was getting ready to make a call. So we, around, you know, my boss, Bill Salmon, said, we're not making any call until everybody says yes, because that was always our policy, unaniminity. And you have to understand, in this room, you have, you know, the, the best, people from academia, Democrats, Republicans, a broad cross-section of people who had worked together for a decade, who are really serious about this stuff. So we knew it would be a consequential call, because it was one of five states that really mattered, right? Wisconsin, Michigan, Pennsylvania, Georgia, Arizona were the ones that we were watching. We knew it would be significant to call any one of those five, but we already knew Trump's chances were very small and getting smaller based on what we had seen. So we were able to make the call early. We were able to beat the competition. We looked around the room. Everybody says yay, and on we go. And by the time we found out how much everybody was freaking out and losing their minds over this call, we were already trying to call the next state. We had already moved on. We were into Georgia. We were to North Carolina. We were looking at these other states. So we thought it was, we were pleased, but not surprised.
I see.
Were you in the White House residence during the sort of past midnight into the early morning hours of, of November 4th?
Yes, oh sure. It went over beyond midnight, yes.
Do you remember Rudy Giuliani being at the White House on election night and into the early hours the next morning?
I do.
What do you remember about when he came?
Um, he, he was, there were, I had heard that he was upstairs, you know, in that aforementioned reception area, and he was looking to talk to the president, and it was suggested instead that he'd come talk to several of us down off the map room.
You said that Mr., you had heard that Mr. Giuliani wanted to talk to the president, and then he was directed your way. Did you end up talking to Mr. Giuliani when he was directed your way?
I did. I did.
What was that conversation?
A lot of conversations were directed my way. A few of us, myself, Jason Miller, Justin Clark, and Mark Meadows gathered in a room off the map room to, to listen to whatever Rudy presumably wanted to say to the president.
Was there anyone in that conversation who, in your observation, had, had too much to drink?
Uh, Mayor Giuliani.
Tell me more about that. What was your observation about his potential intoxication during that, that discussion about what the president should say when he's addressed the nation on election night?
And the mayor was definitely intoxicated, but I do not know his level of intoxication when he spoke with the president, for example.
If you gave me the paper ballots, I could probably turn around each one of these states. I'm absolutely convinced if you, if you let me examine each one of those ballots, I'd pull out enough that were fraudulent that it would shake the hell out of the country.
There were suggestions by, I believe it was Mayor Giuliani, to go declare victory and say that we won it outright. I remember saying that, I, to the best of my memory, I was saying that we should not go and declare victory until we had a better sense of the numbers.
Okay. Can you be more specific about that conversation? In particular, what Mayor Giuliani said, your response, and then anybody else in the room's response?
I think effectively Mayor Giuliani was saying, we won it. They're stealing it from us. Where'd all the votes come from? We need to go say that we won. And essentially, that anyone who didn't agree with that position was being weak.
What was your view at the time as to what he should or shouldn't say?
I don't know that I had a firm view as to what he should say in that circumstance. The results were still being counted. It was becoming clear that the race would not be called on election night.
It was far too early to be making any calls like that. Ballots, ballots were still being counted. Ballots were still going to be counted for days, and it was far too early to be making any proclamation like that. I, I recounted back to that conversation with him, in which I said, just like I said in 2016, it was going to be a long night. I told him in 2020 that, you know, there were, it was going to be a process again, as, you know, the, the early returns are going to be, you know, positive, and we're going to, you know, be watching the returns of ballots as, you know, they rolled in thereafter.
In your judgment, what were the chances of President Trump winning the election?
After that point?
Yes.
None.
Is it fair to say you're trying to present what you thought would be a realistic picture of what might happen over the course of that night, being election night?
That night and the days that followed. Yeah, I, I, I always, I always, you know, I always told the president the truth, and, you know, I, I, you know, I think he expected that from me, and I told him it was going to be a process. It was going to be, you know, you know, we had to wait and see how this turned out. So I, just like I did in 2016, I did the same thing in 2020. My belief, my recommendation was to say that votes were still being counted. It's too early to, to, to tell, too early to call the race. But, you know, we, proud of the race. We, we run, we ran, and we, you know, think we're, think we're in a, in, in good position, and we'll have more to say about this, you know, the next day, or the next day, whenever we had something to say.
And did anybody who was a part of that conversation disagree with your message?
Yes.
Who was that?
The president disagreed with that. I don't recall the particular words. He, he thought I was wrong. He, he told me so, and, you know, that they were going to, you know, going in a, you know, he was going to go in a different direction.
This is a fraud on the American public. This is an embarrassment to our country. We were getting ready to win this election. Frankly, we did win this election. We want all voting to stop. We don't want them to find any ballots at four o'clock in the morning and add them to the list.
Right out of the box on election night, the president claimed that there was major fraud underway. I mean, this happened, as far as I could tell, before there was actually any potential of looking at evidence. And it seemed to be based on the dynamic that, that at the end of the evening, a lot of Democratic votes came in, which changed the vote counts in certain states. And that seemed to be the basis for this broad claim that there was major fraud. And I didn't think much of that, because people had been talking for weeks, and everyone understood for weeks that that was going to be what happened on election night. Also, I was influenced by the fact that all the early claims that I understood were, were completely bogus and silly, and usually based on complete misinformation. And so I, I didn't consider the quality of claims right out of the box to, to give me any, you know, feeling that there was really substance here.
I mean, with each day that wore on, I mean, the, the trajectory of the race, you know, on election night, Trump ahead in, in many states, and as, as that week wore on, as the third became the fourth, became the fifth, and so on and so forth, and the vote-by-mail ballots were tabulated, you know, Trump's, Trump's lead, you know, grew more narrow, and, and in, and in some places, Biden surpassed, you know, Trump in, in the vote totals. So as, as the week wore on, as we paid attention to those numbers every single, multiple times a day, you know, internally, you know, I, I, I was feeling less confident, for sure.
What was your view on the state of the election at that point?
Um, you know, very, very, very bleak. You know, I, I, we, we told him, the group that went over there outlined, you know, my belief in, in, in chances for success at this point. And, and then we pegged it at, at, you know, five, maybe, maybe 10% based on recounts that were, that, that, you know, either were automatically initiated or, or could be, could be initiated based on, you know, realistic legal challenges, not all the legal challenges that eventually were pursued. But, you know, it was, you know, my belief is that it was very, very, I mean, five to 10%. It's not a very good optimistic outlook.
Who won the presidential election of 2020?
Joseph Robinette Biden Jr. of the great state of Delaware.
On November 9th, 2020, President Trump created a separate entity called the Save America PAC. Most of the money raised went to this newly created PAC, not to election-related litigation. The Select Committee discovered that the Save America PAC made millions of dollars of contributions to pro-Trump organizations, including $1 million to Trump Chief of Staff Mark Meadows's charitable foundation, $1 million to the America First Policy Institute, a conservative organization which employs several former Trump administration officials, $204,857 to the Trump Hotel Collection, and over $5 million to Event Strategies, Inc., the company that ran President Trump's January 6 rally on the ellipse.
You know, I think the president, it was during the second week, where things like you displayed were occurring, where he was, you know, growing increasingly happy with, you know, his team, you know, me, less so because I was less involved at this point, but still me, growing increasingly happy with Justin Clark. And that, that kind of, you know, you know, paved the way for, you know, Justin to be moved out and Mayor Giuliani to be moved in as the person in charge of, you know, the legal side of the campaign and for all intents and purposes, the campaign at that point.
Mr. Schmidt, on November 11th, 2020, President Trump tweeted about you, saying, and here's a quote, "A guy named Al Schmidt, a Philadelphia commissioner and so-called Republican, or Rhino, is being used big time by the fake news media to explain how honest things were with respect to the election in Philadelphia. He refuses to look at a mountain of corruption dishonesty. We win." As a result of that tweet and the CNN interview you gave, where you stated the dead voter claims in Pennsylvania were false, you and your staff were subjected to disturbing threats. Can you tell us about that?
The threats prior to that tweet, and on some level, it feels almost silly to talk about a tweet, but we can really see the impact that they have, because prior to that, the threats were pretty general in nature. Corrupt election officials in Philadelphia are going to get what's coming to them. You're what the Second Amendment is for. You're walking into the lion's den, all sorts of things like that. After the president tweeted at me by name, calling me out the way that he did, the threats became much more specific, much more graphic, and included not just me by name, but included members of my family by name, their ages, our address, pictures of our home, just every bit of detail that you could imagine. That was what changed with that tweet.
Now, we redacted portions of the text to protect your family.
This is an email. It's two emails, actually. The first is from Alex Cannon to you and Faith McPherson, and then you forwarded that email on to Mark Meadows, Justin Clark, and Jason Miller, the subject being AZ federal ID voters. If you look at the original email there, it said, "Bill, we completed the AZ analysis you requested." I assume that's about Arizona. And because of the, the substantial uncertainty surrounding the databases, this is a highly unreliable way to identify ineligible voters. Can you explain the task that you gave to Ms. Cannon for this Arizona analysis?
Sure. Previously, I described some of my frustration with some of the, the claims that people would, would throw at President Trump regarding, you know, you need to look at this, you know, this happened in this state, or that happened in that state. And it would be, you know, those would flow to us to, to, to look into. I talked about that before, I think.
Yep.
You know, this is an example of that. I recall, I recall, in Arizona, someone had thrown out, I believe this to be the claim, that there were thousands of illegal citizens, people not eligible to vote, having cast their ballots in Arizona. Someone had thrown out that claim to President Trump. And with, you know, the margins being as close as they were, as I previously described, you know, that could potentially matter. So this wild claim is thrown out, which, you know, on its face didn't seem, you know, realistic or possible to me. I asked Alex to look at the, you know, the, the claim. And I, I haven't read this full, full email, but I recall the, the response to that, the reality of that was not illegal citizens voting in the election. I think it was like overseas voters voting in the election. I, I, so obviously, you know, people who were eligible to vote.
I believe I had about a 15-second conversation with the Vice President about it as well.
When was that?
During one of the visits to the White House. I don't know which one. I think it was the first one in November. I was, I had met him briefly at the campaign, and he remembered me and saw me. And he asked what I was doing on the campaign, and I told him that, you know, we were looking into some of the issues related to voter fraud. And he asked me, I don't remember his exact words, but he asked me if we were finding anything. And I said that I didn't believe we were finding, or I was not personally finding anything sufficient to alter the results of the election. And he, he thanked me. That was our interaction.
Generally discussed on that topic was whether the fraud, mail administration, abuse, or irregularities, if aggregated and read most favorably to the campaign, would that be outcome determinative? And I think everyone's assessment in the room, at least amongst the staff, Mark Short, myself, and Greg Jacob, was that it was not sufficient to be outcome determinative.
Okay. And was it important for you, Mr. Stepien, to sort of pull back, just for your own professional reputation? You didn't want to be associated with some of what you were hearing from the Giuliani team and others that, that sort of stepped in in the wake of your departure?
I didn't mind being categorized. There were two groups of them. We called them kind of my team and Rudy's team. I, I didn't mind being characterized as being part of Team Normal, as, as reporters, you know, kind of started to do around that point in time. You know, I, I said, you know, hours ago, early on, that, you know, I've, I've been doing this for a long time, 25 years, and I've spanned, you know, political ideologies from Trump to McCain to Bush to Christie, you know, and, you know, I can work under a lot of circumstances for a lot of varied, you know, candidates and politicians. But a situation where, and, and I think along the way, I've built up a pretty good, I hope, a good reputation for being honest and, and professional. And I, I, I didn't think what was happening was necessarily honest or professional at that point in time. So that led to me stepping away.
Anyone else other than Mr. Meadows who asked you about the status, outside of your legal group, you know, Mr. Morgan and the others you mentioned, anyone else who asked you the status of what you were finding and your assessment of it?
Uh, yes, sir.
Who's that?
Peter Navarro.
When did you talk to Mr. Navarro?
Hmm, mid-November.
Around the same time as Mr. Meadows?
Yes, sir.
And tell me about that conversation.
Um, I recall him asking me questions about Dominion and maybe some other categories of allegations of voter fraud. And I remember telling him that I didn't believe the Dominion allegations, because I thought the hand recount in Georgia would, would resolve any issues with a technology problem and with Dominion, or Dominion flipping votes. And I, I mentioned at that time that the CISA, Chris Krebs, had recently released a report saying that the election was secure. And I believe Mr. Navarro accused me of being an agent of the deep state, working with Chris Krebs against the president. And I never took another phone call from Mr. Navarro.
They saw a big truck bringing in 100,000 ballots in garbage cans, in wastepaper baskets, in cardboard boxes, and in shopping baskets. And every single one of them was for Biden, because they were being notified by Smartmatic in Franklin that Biden was way behind, and they better come up with a lot more ballots, and we can prove every single thing I just said.
It can set and run an algorithm that probably ran all over the country to take a certain percentage of votes from President Trump and flip them to President Biden, which we might never have uncovered had the votes for President Trump not been so overwhelming in so many of these states that it broke the algorithm.
I thought the Dominion stuff was, I never saw any evidence whatsoever to sustain those allegations.
Didn't have the credentials of the people involved, but I didn't see any real qualifications. And the statements were made very conclusory-like, you know, this, these machines were designed to, you know, engage in fraud or something to that effect, but I didn't see any supporting information for it.
I remember that one of the things Mark said at some point was, you can't show an actual vote was flipped, which I found at the time to be a remarkable assertion, because, because you don't have to have the gun to see the body lying on the floor bleeding out with five bullet holes in it.
out with five bullet holes in it was killed by a gun.
And I was somewhat demoralized because I thought, boy, if he really believes this stuff, he has, you know, lost contact with, with, he's become detached from reality if he really believes this stuff.
What they were proposing, I thought, was nuts. And the theory was also completely nuts, right? I mean, it was a combination of Italians, Germans, I mean, different things have been floating around as to who was involved. I remember Yugo Chavez in Venezuela, she has an affidavit from somebody who says they wrote a software in, something with the Philippines, and just all over the radar.
The Department, in fact, when we received specific and credible allegations of fraud, made an effort to look into these, to satisfy ourselves that they were without merit.
Conversations with probably all of our counsel who were signed up to assist on Election Day as they disengaged with the campaign. The general consensus was that law firms were not comfortable making the arguments that Rudy Giuliani was making publicly. I seem to recall that I had a similar conversation with most all of them.
Did you ever share, Mr. Kushner, your view of Mr. Giuliani? Did you ever share your perspective about him with the president? Tell me what you said.
Basically, not the approach I would take if I was you.
Okay. And how did he react? How did President Trump react when you shared that view with him?
He said, you know, I have confidence in Rudy.
I think I made it clear I did not agree with the idea of saying the election was stolen and putting out this stuff, which I told the president was bullshit. And, you know, I didn't want to be a part of it, and that's one of the reasons that went into me deciding to leave when I did. And I was in the posture of trying to figure out, there was an avalanche of all these allegations of fraud that built up over a number of days, and it was like playing whack-a-mole because something would come out one day, and then the next day it would be another issue. So on November 23rd, I hadn't spoken to the president since the election, and in fact, as I said, since the middle of October roughly. And it was a little getting awkward because obviously he had lost the election, and I hadn't said anything to him. And so Cipollone said, you know, I think it's time you come over here. And so I came over to meet with the president in the Oval Office, and Meadows and Cipollone were there. And the president, and this is leading up to this conversation with Kushner, the president said there had been major fraud and that as soon as the facts were out, the results of the election would be reversed. And he went on this for quite a while, as he's prone to do. And then he got to something that I was expecting, which is to say that apparently the Department of Justice doesn't think that it has a role of looking into these fraud claims. So I said, you know, that has to be the campaign that raises that with the state. The Department doesn't take side in elections, and the Department is not an extension of your legal team. And our role is to investigate fraud, and if, we'll look at something, if it's specific, credible, and could have affected the outcome of the election, and we're doing that, and it's just not, they're just not meritorious, they're not panning out. And as I walked out of the Oval Office, Jared was there with Dan Scavino, who ran his, ran the president's social media, and who I thought was a reasonable guy and believed is a reasonable guy. And I said, how long is, how long is he going to carry on with this stolen election stuff? Where's this going to go? And by that time, Meadows had caught up with me and leaving the office and caught up with me and said that, he said, look, I think that he's becoming more realistic and knows that there's a limit to how far he can take this. And then Jared said, you know, yeah, we're working on this, we're working on it. You know, the idea, the president has repeatedly suggested that there was some kind of help pouring of unexpected votes in inner-city areas like Philadelphia, as recently as January 13th, when he walked off, the NPR said. He was asked by the interviewer, what's, you know, what's your evidence of fraud? And he said, more people voted in Philadelphia than there were voters. And that was absolute rubbish. The turnout in Philadelphia was in line with the state's turnout, and in fact, it was not as impressive as many suburban counties. And there was nothing strange about the Philadelphia turnout. It wasn't like there was all these unexpected votes that came out in Philadelphia. So, you know, I think once you actually look at the votes and then, there's an obvious explanation. He, you know, for example, in Pennsylvania, Trump ran weaker than the Republican ticket generally. He ran weaker than two of the state candidates. He ran weaker than the congressional delegate, delegation, running for federal Congress, and he ran weaker than the Republican, I think. I haven't looked at this recently, but he generally was a weak element on the Republican ticket. So that does not suggest that the election was stolen by fraud.
How about Pennsylvania and Bill McSwain? We were talking to the U.S. Attorney in Philadelphia about the alleged discrepancy between the number of absentee ballots issued and the number of ballots cast.
Right. So I, you know, that was one of the big ones for a period of time. I think, I think that was raised in Gettysburg by Giuliani or something like that, but it kept on being repeated, and I found it annoying because it didn't seem that it was right. So I called, I called McSwain, and he got back to me, he said, no, the problem is that Streana threw out a, threw out this number, and what he did was, he mixed apples and oranges. He took the number of applications for the Republican primary, and he compared it to the number of absentee votes cast in the general election. But once you actually go and look and compare apples to apples, there's no discrepancy at all. And, you know, that's one of the, I think at some point I covered that with the president.
Rudy was at this stage of his life in the same ability to manage things at this level, or not? And obviously, I think Bernie Kerik publicly said it, they never proved the allegations that they were making, and they were trying to develop.
I guess the crooks in Philadelphia are disappointed in this. They only submitted 8,021 ballots from dead people, mail-in ballots for dead people. Probably easier for dead people to submit mail-in ballots than it is to vote in person.
Not only was there not evidence of 8,000 dead voters voting in Pennsylvania, there wasn't evidence of eight.
I felt that things continued to deteriorate between the 23rd and the weekend of the 29th. And then on November 29th, he appeared on Maria Bartiromo's show, Sunday Futures, I believe it was, and he said that the Department was missing in action.
Well, no, we had glitches where they moved thousands of votes from my account to Biden's account, and these are glitches. So they're not glitches, they're theft, they're fraud, absolute fraud. This election was over, and then they did dumps. They call them dumps, big massive dumps, in Michigan, in Pennsylvania, and all over. How the FBI and Department of Justice, I don't know, maybe they're involved, but how people are allowed to get away from this, with this stuff is unbelievable.
This got under my skin, but I also felt it was time for me to say something. So I had, I set up a lunch with the AP reporter, Mike Balsamo, and I told him at lunch, I made this statement, that to date, we have not seen fraud on a scale that could have affected a different outcome in the election. I had a later meeting scheduled at the White House at 3:00 with Meadows. This was previously scheduled, so I knew this was going to come up. And I went over there, and I told my secretary that I thought I would probably be fired and not to, to go home. I mean, not go back to my office, so I said, you might have to pack up for me. And so when I got over there, I met with the chief of staff. He said the president was angry. He didn't really go get into the issue of the fraud. And then I went up to Pat Cipollone's office, and we were talking with each other. And word came down that he wanted us both to go to the Oval, and the president was as mad as I've ever seen him, and he was trying to control himself. And the president said, well, this is, you know, killing me. You didn't have to say this, you must have said this because you hate Trump, you hate Trump. Then he raised the big vote dump, as he called it, in Detroit, and that, you know, he said people saw boxes coming into the counting station at all hours of the morning and so forth. And I explained to him that, at that point, I knew the exact number of precincts in Detroit, I think it was 630-something. I said, Mr. President, there are 630 precincts in Detroit, and unlike elsewhere in the state, they centralized the counting process, so they're not counted in each precinct, they're moved to counting stations. And so the normal process would involve boxes coming in at all different hours. So there's nothing, and I said, did anyone point out to you, did all the people complaining about it point out to you, you actually did better in Detroit than you did last time? I mean, there's no indication of fraud in Detroit. And I told him that the stuff that his people were shuttling out to the public was bullshit. I mean, that the claims of fraud were bullshit. And, you know, he was indignant about that. And I reiterated that they wasted a whole month on these claims on the Dominion voting machines, and they were idiotic claims. And I specifically raised the Dominion voting machines, which I found to be among the most disturbing allegations, disturbing in the sense that I saw absolutely zero basis for the allegations, but they were made in such a sensational way that they obviously were influencing a lot of people, members of the public, that there was this systemic corruption in the system, and that their votes didn't count, and that these machines controlled by somebody else were actually determining it, which was complete nonsense. And it was being laid out there, and I told him that it was, it was crazy stuff, and they were wasting their time on that. And it was doing a great, grave disservice to the country.
Here's an example. This is Michigan. At 6:31 in the morning, a vote dump of 149,772 votes came in unexpectedly. We were winning by a lot. That batch was received in horror. We have a company that's very suspect. Its name is Dominion. With the turn of a dial or the change of a chip, you can press a button for Trump, and the vote goes to Biden. What kind of a system is this?
Approximately December 4th, I believe, of 2020, Attorney General Barr and I had a conversation about an unrelated case, the case at issue. At the end of the conversation, Mr. Barr had asked me if I had seen a certain videotape that was being reported in the news, where Mr. Giuliani, in a Senate Subcommittee hearing that was held the day before, May 3rd, showed a videotape of a purportedly, a security tape at the State Farm Arena in Atlanta, which is also in Fulton County, the city of Atlanta. I'm sorry, city of, yes. At the time, Mr. Barr asked me that he had made a public statement that he had not seen any widespread election fraud that would question the outcome of the election. And because of the videotape and the serious allegation that Mr. Giuliani was making in respect to the suitcase full of ballots purported in the video, he asked me to find out what I could about it, because he had envisioned that in some days after our call that he was going to go to the White House for a meeting, and then that issue might come up. He asked me to make it a priority to get to the bottom of, to try to substantiate the allegation made by Mr. Giuliani. We found that the suitcase full of ballots, the alleged black suitcase that was being seen pulled from under the table, was actually an official lockbox where ballots were kept safe. We found out that there was a mistake in terms of this misunderstanding that they were done counting ballots or tallying ballots for the night, and the partisan watchers that was assigned by each of the respective parties were announced to send home. But once they realized the mistake, someone from the Secretary of State's office had indicated that, no, 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 we're not done for the night. You need to go ahead and continue counting. So once they packed up the lockbox full of ballots, they brought back the official ballot box again and continued to tally the ballots from that, from the lockbox. Unfortunately, during the Senate hearing, Mr. Giuliani only played a clip that showed them pulling out the official ballot box from under the table, and referring to that as a smoking gun of fraud in Fulton County. But in actuality, in review of the entire video, it showed that that was actually an official ballot box that was kept underneath the tables, and then we saw them pack up because of the announcement that they thought they were done for the night. And then, once the announcement was made that you should continue counting, they brought the ballot box back out, and they continued to count. We interviewed, the FBI interviewed the individuals that are depicted in the videos that purportedly were double, triple counting of the ballots, and determined that nothing irregular happened in the counting, and the allegations made by Mr. Giuliani were false.
Mr. Donahue, you, we talked at some length about whether or not the White House, the president was informed about the Antrim report. On the result of the investigations, the interviews that had gone on on Fulton County, how would those results have been communicated to the White House, to the president?
I don't know how they were initially communicated. I do know that they came up in subsequent conversations with the president, and Dag Rose and I essentially told him, we looked into that, and it's just not true.
Okay. So he was, he was informed?
I told the president myself that several times in several conversations, that these allegations about ballots being smuggled in, in a suitcase, and run through the machine several times, it was not true, that we looked at, we looked at the video, we interviewed the witnesses, it was not true. There was never, there was never an indication of interest in what the actual facts were. When I walked in, sat down, he went off on a monologue saying that there was now definitive evidence involving fraud through the Dominion machines, and a report had been prepared by a very reputable cybersecurity firm, which he identified as Allied Security Operations Group, and he held up the report, and he had, and then he asked that a copy of it be made for me. And while a copy was being made, he said, you know, this is absolute proof that the Dominion machines were rigged. The report means that I'm going to have a second term. And then he gave me a copy of the report, and as he talked more and more about it, I sat there flipping through the report and looking through it. And to be frank, it looked very amateurish to me. I felt that before the election, it was possible to talk sense to the president, and while you sometimes had to engage in, you know, a big wrestling match with him, that it was possible to keep things on track, but I was, felt that after the election, he didn't seem to be listening, and I didn't think it was, you know, that I was inclined not to stay around if he wasn't listening to advice from me or his other cabinet secretaries. My opinion then, and my opinion now, is that the election was not stolen by fraud. And I haven't seen anything since the election that changes my mind on that, including the 2000 Mules movie.
Other than, try to address a counterfactual or a hypothetical, let me just say, there were instances where the president would say, people are telling me this, or I've heard this, or I saw on television, you know, this impropriety in Atlanta or Pennsylvania or something. And he, he were in a position to say, our people already looked at that, and we know that you're getting bad information, that that's, that's not correct. It's been demonstrated to be incorrect from our point of view.
A month and a half or so after the Election Day, and at that meeting, you know, various allegations of fraud were discussed, and, you know, Eric and Pat didn't, you know, told the group, the president included, that, you know, none of those allegations had been substantiated to the point where they could be the basis for any litigation challenge to the election?
I tried to, again, put this in perspective and to try to put it in very clear terms to the president, and I said something to the effect of, "Sir, we've done dozens of investigations, hundreds of interviews. The major allegations are not supported by the evidence developed. We've looked in Georgia, Pennsylvania, Michigan, Nevada. We're doing our job. Much of the info you're getting is false." And then I went into, for instance, this thing from Michigan, this report about 68% error rate. Reality is, it was only 0.0063% error rate, less than 1 in 15,000. So the president accepted that. He said, "Okay, fine, but what about the others?" And again, this gets back to the point that there were so many of these allegations that when you gave him a very direct answer on one of them, he wouldn't fight us on it, but he would move to another allegation. So then I talked about, a little bit about the Pennsylvania truck driver. This is another allegation that had come up. And this claim was by a truck driver who believed, perhaps honestly, that he had transported an entire tractor trailer truck full of ballots from New York to Pennsylvania. And this was, again, out there in the public and discussed. And I essentially said, "Look, we looked at that allegation. We looked at both ends, both the people who loaded the truck and the people who unloaded the truck." And that, that allegation was not supported by the others. Again, he said, "Okay." And then he said, "No, I didn't mention that one. What about the others?" And I said, "Okay, well, with regard to Georgia, we looked at the tape, we interviewed the witnesses. There is no suitcase." The president kept fixating on this suitcase that supposedly had foreign ballots, that the suitcase was rolled out from under the table. And I said, "No, sir, there is no suitcase. You can watch that video over and over. There is no suitcase. There is a wheeled bin where they carry the ballots, and that's just how they move ballots around that facility. There's nothing suspicious about that at all." I told him that there was no multiple scanning of the ballots. One of the, one part of that allegation was that they were taking one ballot and scanning it through three or four or five times to rack up votes presumably for Vice President Biden. I told him that the video did not support that. Then he went off on double voting at the top of the next page. He said, "Dead people are voting. Indians are getting paid to vote." He meant people on Native American reservations. He said, "There's lots of fraud going on here." I told him flat out that much of the information he's getting is false and/or just not supported by the evidence. We look at the allegations, but they don't pan out.
So are you aware of any instance in which a court found the Trump campaign's fraud claims to be credible?
No, there was, there was never that instance in all the cases that were brought, and I've looked at the more than 60 that include more than 180 counts. And no, the simple fact is that the Trump campaign did not make its case.
You can see behind me a few excerpts from the decisions in these 62 cases. The Trump campaign's lack of evidence was criticized by judges across the political spectrum. In Pennsylvania, a Trump-appointed judge concluded, quote, "Charges require specific allegations and proof. We have neither here." Another Trump-appointed judge warned that if cases like these succeeded, quote, "Any disappointed loser in a presidential election able to hire a team of clever lawyers could flag claimed deviations from election results and cast doubt on election results."
Between Election Day and January 6th, the Trump campaign sent millions of fundraising emails to Trump supporters, sometimes as many as 25 a day. The emails claimed the, quote, "Left-wing mob was undermining the election," implored supporters to, quote, "Step up to protect the integrity of the election," and encouraged them to, quote, "Fight back."
I don't believe there is actually a fund called the Election Defense Fund.
Is it fair to say that the Election Defense Fund was another, I think we called it a marketing tactic?
Yes.
And tell us about these funds as marketing tactics?
Uh, just a topic matter where money could potentially go to be, how money could potentially be used.
The claims that the election was stolen were so successful, President Trump and his allies raised $250 million, nearly $100 million in the first week after the election. The emails continued through January 6th, even as President Trump spoke on the election.
I know exactly what's going on right now. Fake election. They think they're going to fucking cheat us out of our vote and put communist fucking Biden in office. It ain't fucking happening today, buddy.
Did you vote it?
Yes, sir.
How'd it go?
Voted early, it went well, except for the, can't, can't really trust the software, Dominion software all over.
We voted, and right in the top right-hand corner of the Dominion voting machine that we used, there was a Wi-Fi symbol with five bars. So that was most definitely connected to the internet, without a doubt. So they stole that from us twice. We're not doing it anymore. We're not taking it anymore. So we're standing up, we're here, and whatever happens, we're not laying down again.
All of us here today do not want to see our election victory stolen by emboldened radical left Democrats, which is what they're doing.
Thirty minutes after the last fundraising email was sent, the Capitol was breached.
It worked. It didn't work. It absolutely worked. It didn't work.
We voted.
No.
Trust the system.
200,000 people that weren't even registered voted. 430,000 votes disappeared from President Trump's tally, and you can't stand there and tell me that it worked.
I don't want to say that what we're doing is right, but if the election's being stolen, what is it going to take?
I said to him, "Are you out of your F-ing mind?" Right? I said, "I, I said, "I only want to hear two words coming out of your mouth from now on. Orderly transition."